Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the county employees retirement system. We're having a special Board of Trustees meeting. Mr. Bronco, if you could read the opening statement, please.
Thank you. I want to note that this is a special called meeting of the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute 61-820-6. It may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority's office located at 1260 Louisville Road in Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. If you are speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event that video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned, rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin, would you call roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pendergrass?
Here.
Dr. Carver?
Here.
Mr. Cheatham? Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman?
Here.
Mr. Omera? Mr. Powell?
Here.
And we'll go back, Mr. Cheatham?
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Oh, you are quite all right, thank you. Do you have a full quorum?
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am, no public comment.
All right. We can go to the cover memo that I gave to the trustees. The purpose of today's meeting is to discuss the proposed 2024 housekeeping bill. It's very, very similar to the 2023 housekeeping request, but there are a few changes. I noted those changes in the memo. LRC staff had done a few technical corrections. There were some additional technical corrections that are outlined in the addition document. And a portion of the 2023 bill was pulled out and put into another bill, House Bill 506, and I've given you that bill under the tab for the 2023 legislation. One of the reasons that I wanted to talk about this is that we basically have some policy changes in both bills, housekeeping requests, that I thought the trustees might want to get some additional information about those policy changes. One of those was to add a vocational expert to the medical review teams. I don't think we have any problems with that. When we reviewed it last year, we thought that was a good idea. Does anybody have any questions about adding that vocational expert? Okay. The second one was to permit telephone voting for trustee elections. When the CERS Legislative Working Group looked at this in 2023, they weren't really excited about this notion. Rebecca can, or who can give us a little bit more information about how the telephone voting might work? And this is a May, right? We don't have to use telephone.
Correct. This just gives us the option.
The option.
Erin, do you want to take it? Kristen is also on. My understanding is that it's an option. It would still be an external entity. This is not calling into the call center. This is, the external entity has this as an option. So they, they do railings, they do our online voting. It all is controlled by Election America, happens to be the vendor right now. They would have a phone number. You would have an identifying number. It's not the member ID. We don't give them that. They'd have some sort of unique identifier so that that member only votes once.
Right.
It's not a number that they would just vote and vote as they wish. So there are auditing standards that they follow that would prevent this from being abused.
Okay.
Similar to the ones that we would use for paper ballots, similar to the ones we would use for online voting.
Betty, could I add a comment?
Sure.
I think one of the voters was to reduce cost. They still aren't very able to do a telephonic getting that by mail. And secondly, was to increase participation.
Right.
And I'm sure you know, we're participating at like 5%. So we're at a 5% of people.
Extremely low.
Trustee, so that was the objective.
So of all those you watching on Facebook, please make sure that everybody knows about voting in elections. Does anybody have any questions about that one? Since it is a May option to permit telephone voting, we could have a more in-depth discussion if we decide to use that telephone voting and go into more detail.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Foster.
Can you be yellow handed?
I'm not sure that provision would not violate the open meetings act. And I don't know if we can change those meetings, all valid, have a piece of legislation.
This is the election process for electing trustees? That's not done through an open meeting? We send ballots to the members and the members cast a ballot for the elected trustees? A good point, though. I'm glad you're watching that issue.
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
Yes, the question I was saying, what safeguards would be in place to protect against a erroneous voting?
It would work.
With the telephone.
I'm sorry, Matt. It would work very similar to the same type of safeguards that are in place for phone calls would be the same as for paper ballots, the same as for online voting. So a member has to identify who they are, and that member, once validated, only votes once. They could only vote once. They couldn't, they couldn't do the paper ballot and then go also do the phone and do the online. They can't do the online more than once. They can't do the phone more than once. It's really very similar. They identify them with a particular, a unique number, whatever that is. It's either printed on the ballot that gets sent to them that they return, or it's, they key it in when they're online, or they provide it to the person they're speaking to on the phone. And then.
Go ahead.
They would have like, similar to the PIN number that's being used now, then, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good analogy. It's very similar to that.
I'm sorry, I might have missed this. Is this process used for other boards, state government?
It is. Election America is actually the ones who brought it to us. The vendor brought it to us, so they, they do this with other folks, yes.
In the state?
I don't know if it's in the Commonwealth or not. I don't know if anybody else is using that, that pile, but.
It's part of this.
Might be good to check on that.
If anybody else, meaning if teachers or justice reformers.
Is it universally, okay, state government?
Yes.
Or would we be, would we be unique? We adopted this?
I have a question.
Legislature adopted it, yes.
And that would be an issue that we could dive into a lot deeper if we get that research done before we get to an election process when we want to use that telephone voting. So we could.
It might, it might be good to be prepared on that question.
Yes, absolutely. JT, you had a question?
Yes, it seems like a really good idea to me. Why was it opposed by the group?
The security issues.
Well, what's different than that in, in online?
All the scamming things you have on your telephone. For me, anyway, it was just a knee-jerk reaction to the fact that I have such a hard time using my phone for legitimate purposes now, and the number of people who can steal phone numbers, et cetera.
So. Yeah, I think the assumption was that people were, it was the phone number that was going to be validated. But we don't have phone numbers for many of our folks who are eligible, so.
Ms. Pendergrass?
It's a unique number.
If I may say, I think the legislation also requires that before either board goes down that, down that road of allowing it, they have to adopt a regulation governing it.
Okay, great.
So that would allow us to really flesh out the process by which it's going to be done.
And deal with some of those concerns?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right. Any other questions or comments on telephone voting for trustee elections? Okay, the, the other policy change was revising the medical review process for elections. So if we could go to page 215 of Board Books, and I'm going to hand it off to Erin to give us some background, that we had a variety of questions about how this process has changed over the years and how many applications are approved very easily and so forth. So I'm going to let Erin go through some historical and performance information that she has gathered for us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pendergrass. And I also have Liza Welch with me. Of course, she's the Division Director of Disability and Survivor Benefits, so she'll be here to answer any questions you may have as well. So just looking at the history, a little bit of the history with the medical review process, we went back to 1998 where, as you can see, a single medical examiner, a disability review was sent to a single medical examiner. And if that medical examiner approved the disability, then the approval, they were set up for payment and everything went through. If the medical examiner at that time denied the disability application, then the system submitted the application to two additional medical examiners for review at that time. This process changed in 2001. It was still just sent to a single medical examiner to do the initial review. And if that medical examiner approved the application, then the member was approved for disability benefits. The change was made to, if it was denied, to send it to just one additional medical examiner to review as opposed to two, as a cost savings. Because if it was a denial, if the second doctor denied, then if we had two denials, then it was a denial to the member. So it was done as a cost savings and time savings, as I understand, to try to get some of the reviews out a little timelier to our members. And then if you'll go to the next page, Sheri. And then in 2004, the statute was changed again to say that we shall submit the disability, disability application to three medical examiners to evaluate the application. So we sent the application to all three doctors at one time, and we had to wait for the review of each of the three doctors to come back before we sent a, an approval or a denial to the member. It's my understanding that this was also changed in 2004 and to reduce time to get a decision to the member. Is that correct, Liza? Yes. So we just went ahead and sent it to all three at one time to try to expedite that process. So as you all are aware, we contracted with MRO in 2020, August of 2020, and outsourced the disability review process from what we were doing in-house and contracting with our own doctors. So one of the, there were several reasons, but a couple of the significant reasons for looking at outsourcing is because we had a problem with retaining and finding medical examiners who would stay on contract with us, and, and that was cumbersome trying to get them on. It also was taking months to get a decision to our members, anywhere from two to six months in many cases, once the doctors received the application from us. So currently with MRO, it is taking about three weeks from the time the doctors receive the application, the three doctors receive the application, from the time they receive that to get the, the decision back and the information out to the member. So in looking at this, we, Sheri, if you'll go back two slides for me, please, I'm sorry.
Do you want to come out of expertise, too?
Yeah, I'll get there. So in the housekeeping bill, when we were looking at the review process and thinking of ways, cost savings, and that we could maybe introduce into with this new contract, we went back and looked at the iteration that was under 2001, where it just required one medical examiner to approve, and then the, each subsequent doctor, was sent to each subsequent doctor if needed. With MRO, MRO contracts, we have doctors that specialize in certain areas. So if a member makes a claim of disability, something heart-related, then it would go to a cardiologist for review. So we have some of that more specialized expertise on MRO staff, so we feel comfortable with just needing a one doctor approval, that, that would be okay. We do recognize that if we send it to one and then that's a denial, and then it has to go to a second doctor to review, that could extend the process a little more than what we're seeing right now, the three weeks, or it may not. So one, one additional item that we have with MRO is the doctors do the review. They submit very comprehensive reports, and those go through a quality review process before they ever get to us to send the.
Quality review, review at MRO, yes?
Yes, before we send the decision out to the members. So that quality review process, as part of that, we have to wait for the three doctors to submit their reports. The person, the quality reviewer, has to review all three documents, all three reports, and then if there's things that need to be worked on, the back and forth between them and the doctor. It may take less time to get an approval to a member because it would only take one review of a, or a review of one report as opposed to three. So that could decrease some time. And we also, Liza and I talked, and we think there's room to work with MRO if it were to go to a second medical examiner or a third medical examiner to work on prioritization of those reviews as it relates to all of the reviews that we have sent them.
MRO would look at those cases quicker.
Yes, that's what we, we would anticipate. And MRO has been, and Liza can speak to this, but MRO has been very good at working with us and, and, you know, understanding our processes. And so I think that they would, they would be open to any suggestions, you know, changes we can make there.
Did we look at the 98 version of if the first one denies it, it goes to two more instead of just one more?
We, we know that that exists. The reason we didn't go, again, cost savings. So if it went back to the 98 version, then you would be paying for three reviews if it was a denial. You could, if we go to the 2001 iteration, it could potentially just be two if the first and the second doctor both deny. So that's, that was the reason for going back to the 2001, the cost savings that would be associated with that. So.
I'll just second. Jerry Powell has a question. Go ahead, Jerry.
The, what kind of jumps out at me is when you look at the dates of this. I'm concerned about the 2001 iteration, that it was 2004 before they changed it. So obviously something wasn't working right. Otherwise, why would you change it in three years?
Yeah.
That's just my, one of my takeaways from it.
Well, it, some of, some of our reasoning is speculation because I wasn't in leadership at that time. I was a counselor in that division, so I was processing those, and the best of my, 2001 was a long time ago. So forgive me, but I do.
That's before I was born.
Come on, Jerry. But my recollection is just that it was, we were running up against the, it became the time it was getting, taking to turn around the decision, where we didn't have a robust group of physicians that we were contracting with. It was very difficult. And so to step through the process in that way was really lengthening the process, which always results in more constituent services calls and just general concern, even on the staff's behalf, about people calling. It increased phone calls, but people calling for the status of their claim and us having to continue to kind of move that mark to meet, you know, what the expectation is. So I think that the major impetus, from my point of view and my recollection, was to try to shorten that process and to increase our customer service.
Well, I do think it's worth noting that our pool of physicians is different now than it was in 2001.
Absolutely. That's huge, yeah.
And adding the vocational expert could also change that dynamic, so.
Yes. And like I said, the data that we have was through calendar year 2022. And like I said, that data showed that it was taking three weeks. And having discussion with Liza recently, and she said, she thinks that it may be even less time that it's taking now. So I think that we have done a good job at eliminating some of those concerns with timeliness with this contracting with MRO. So that's why we felt comfortable in suggesting that the process go back again to the 2001 iteration. And, you know, we, these policy items over the years, the 98, the 2001, the 2004, those were all changed by, from staff recommendations of seeing what was going on administratively at the time. And we feel, again, we feel like we're in a very good spot now with getting the reviews completed timely and having the expertise and the specialized doctors that we can feel comfortable going back to something like the 2001.
Let's go to your slide with the outcomes on claims.
Sure.
Yeah, I was quite finished there, Betty.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry. Go ahead.
I had some follow-ups there. But if you look at the 2000, or what is proposed, using that three-week window that you were talking about, you, you send it to one examiner, he reviews it, denies it. So they sent that, that, so three weeks is the last. So they send it to another one, and this one approves it. So now we're at six weeks. So now they got to send it to a different one. So now we're at nine weeks.
Yeah, and I, yes, we recognize that.
That's not timely for the members.
And, yeah, we recognize that. What I would say, the nine weeks is a much shorter timeframe than it was before we were with MRO. So while we wouldn't want it to necessarily extend to nine weeks, and that's where I was saying we could work with MRO in setting priorities to try to get it done quicker than that, that we would strive to get it out before then. But you're right, it could, in some cases, take up to nine weeks based on experience data that we have.
You know, now granted that I, we haven't had that much experience with medical reviews since MRO take over the project, process, but I, on 90% of the time, I could tell you from the previous ones that they, one or two of the doctors would almost routinely deny it. And, and you know the ones I'm referring to because you've seen the same returns from them also. And I'm just worried that, you know, this could be the same issue. And then here it is, the members just get pushed back and pushed back. I just have concern with this, this proposed process of one, one and one. Thank you.
Any other questions on the, the historical timing?
I've, I've got some questions I think pertain to that, Betty.
Go ahead. Mr. Cheatham?
I've not dealt with this side of the equation very much, but just make sure that I'm understanding what's gone on in the past. 98, from 98 up through, what, a few years ago, the medical reviewers were being employed directly by KPPA or KRS, is that correct?
They contracted individually with KPPA.
What was the cost of that?
I don't remember.
And it changed over time?
Yes.
I mean, the, the, the year or the two years prior to contract and direct with this company, what was the cost roughly, ballpark? what was the cost roughly, ballpark?
Hundred bucks a case, about that, or was it an hour?
No, it was a case.
Do we pay them per case? I'm thinking it was like $100 a case-ish.
And that was raised multiple times. Well, I mean, it got raised to 100, and what the 100 came in the last couple of years that we contracted.
Correct.
So total expenditures those years, were they? I understand our contract is a not-to-exceed contract right now at $3.6 million. Were we spending more or less than that?
Less.
It was less for the medical reviews portion of it, yes, it was less. There was, you know, it, MRO didn't just take on the doctor reviews. They've taken on more than that. They've taken on the initial collecting of the medical documents, helping the members get everything that is needed to have the best review possible.
Transcriptions.
Transcriptions, which was before we were with MRO. Those were things that were being done by staff at KPPA. Another big need that we did not have at KPPA, the expertise, we did not have a nurse case manager to look at the medical records, review the medical records, to determine that everything that's needed in order to make the best review possible is sent, before it's sent to the doctor, collecting the records, getting them all in the proper order so that the doctors can review it tight and don't have to spend a lot of time sifting through the documents and things like that. Had we not contracted with MRO, we would have had to have hired some of that expertise on staff. So that was something that we were lacking in that area. But MRO is covering. So some of what's in the contract is paying for some of those other services as well and not just the doctor's review.
I'm glad you went to that point because that was one of the things that I had highlighted in the contract, that they are supposed to be ensuring all that material is there to make a proper diagnosis, correct?
Correct.
Is that happening?
Yes, and their nurse case manager will actually reach out to our member and note to them what might be missing and helps them collect that information to present a more complete file for review.
Have they sent one through that doesn't have all the medical records?
I'm sorry, I didn't. Have they sent through someone who doesn't have all of the medical records?
Not that we have identified.
I can identify one for you.
Well, there's a distinction between all the medical records that had been provided by the member and medical records that are missing because the member hasn't provided those yet. I know that from the, from serving on the DAC committee, that we frequently have cases where the member has some concerns and doctors have some concerns, and they ask for additional medical records, and the case gets sent back to the member to provide some additional information. But the instance where a member has provided medical records, I don't remember seeing a case where records that we have from the member were not given to the medical reviewers.
I'll listen to you. We'll see you soon.
I went back to an older budget report, and I think the total medical reviewer cost was somewhere in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $500,000 compared to the contract that we have now, but...
That's about right. What year are you looking at, Betty?
I think it's 2022 compared to 2021.
We had, because partly hearing officers, but also because of disability, having problems with them, we were seeing fewer cases. So for a while, we were budgeting up here because that's where the trend had been for several years. And we just weren't getting there because we couldn't get there. Back to Mr. Powell's question of, do we want to go from three weeks to nine weeks? We were going from three-plus months, six months. So we went from unacceptably slow with MRO to lightning-fast. So I think the question is, can we throttle back on the speed comfortably enough to save some money? Because we are paying a tremendous amount for this. I believe we're somewhere in the $500 a case for the medical examiners, and we were paying about $100 a case. It's significantly more. But we're getting really high-quality, really fast speeds and handholding for the members. The service is just phenomenal compared to what we were able to do in-house.
Yeah, I remember that the first year or two that we made the shift, I was looking at the prior year, and the increase in cost was five times. Now, that may have settled out some. David, you go.
Yeah, to Lyle's point, we did an analysis of this recently. And one of the savings on our end is, I think, we eliminated 11 or nine positions.
Nine positions, plus we did not hire at least one, if not probably two.
Way back on staff.
We moved them somewhere else. In the disability.
Where we had vacancies and where we were looking for people. You're right, they went elsewhere. But they're not in that department at all. It's a huge difference there. So I think our sense is that the cost may be comparable, at least in the ballpark, but the service is extremely better.
Lyle, does that help? Do you have any additional questions?
I've got a few, yes, ma'am. And it may pay more to what, I'll let Erin go through her numbers because it probably paid more to that than what we've been talking about.
Okay, but page 217, Sheri.
Okay, so this is for the new cases, which was, this would be the applications, the new applications that go through this process. Again, this is data through calendar year 2022. There were, the percentage that were approved on first review were 35%, denied or disapproval, as they listed, was 48%. And we have 17% of what was submitted to them initially was an administrative closure, which would have never been reviewed by a doctor, correct?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How many people are we talking about that submitted? So when I hear 35%, is 35% of how many?
So it fluctuates from year to year. For 2022, I believe there were 477 is what we had in the Saffir of new applications. Typically, it's around 600 is what I would typically say, see. So it has decreased some, but we've seen that over the years that there's been a decrease in the number of initial applications. So, and I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have a number for 2022.
Tell me again about the 17%. What does that mean?
Most often, it's when someone applies for disability retirement, they have 180 days to submit all the required supporting documentation to MRO. And if that 180 days elapses, we'll administratively close the case. They're still within 24 months of their last day of paid employment. They can apply again. But then also, some people will apply and then withdraw their application as well. So it's kind of a combination of those things.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Erin.
So then if we go to the next slide, Sheri, we just gave an example, basically looking at if 100 reviews, if there were 100 initial application reviews and compared what the current process is, using the data, the approval, the percentages, and compared it to what the new process would be. So under the current process, for 100 initial applications, there would be 300 reviews that are being paid for. Under the new process, everyone would get one review, of course, the 100. And then based on the percentages that we saw on the screen before, 65 of those would go on for a second review. So it could go down to 165 reviews versus the 300. Or if it's a split decision, so if the first doctor denies, the second doctor approves, and it's going to go on to a third review. So we could see as much as a 45% decrease in the number of actual reviews that are being done by a doctor, a medical examiner.
Okay, anything else to add? If we can go back one slide, Sheri, please. What concerns me is this 48% of the applications are disapproved, which means they end up going through a more elaborate process. And it, those cases are always going to take more time and require more medical reviewers, either under the old system or the proposed system. So, I mean, it's nice that 35% get through with having their claims expedited, or their applications expedited. And there are some disabilities that are easier to identify and approve. So that does help. Mr. Cheatham, you had some other questions?
Yeah, the 17%. Erin, are you telling me that those 17% are basically never heard from again as far as a claim, or they have to re-up their claim?
They can, if they're within 24 months of their last day of paid employment, they can reapply if they choose to do so.
So do we have any idea how many of them are having to reapply? Because my concern is, is with regard to the information that they're having to provide and apparent reliance on a medical provider's office to provide that information.
I might be able to help, I might be able to help with that some. Rebecca made mention of the services that we get from MRO that we weren't able to provide ourselves. We are required by statute to follow up at 150 days after someone has applied to say, hey, we're missing this form, this form, or your medical records. And then at 180 days, we let them know that we're closing their claim. MRO is following up at 30, 60, 90, 120, and 150 days. So they're keeping in touch with these members, letting them know that they're there to help. Is there something that they need help getting? But essentially, the statute places the burden on the member to collect their own medical records. MRO does offer assistance. And then whatever the member provides to us, that is what we have to review. Now, in MRO's reports, and even in our reports previously, we've always tried to note missing information or, you know, if there's, we notice that you're applying for this some. If you're applying because of a heart condition, it would be helpful to have some cardiology records, that sort of thing, so that when they do appeal, they have some direction on the type of information they might want to collect. So we, it's, we do, we are, during that 180 days, someone is working with them to try to facilitate them getting that information in.
But bottom line, at least half or more, you've got 48% that have denied it outright out of the gate. We've got to figure there's at least 2% that are having to reapply because something didn't get where it needed to be. So at least half of these people are going to end up going through a second or third review. Is that correct?
Yes, based on the stats we have received back from MRO through 2022.
When they go through that second review and they still don't get the answer they want, that is when they essentially apply for a hearing. Is that correct?
Right, they have the option to request an administrative hearing.
So what percentage out of that 100 are ending up in a hearing?
I don't have that statistic, but I could probably...
I think we could probably get that. We just don't have it.
Well, I can tell you that the caseload at the DAC level is relative. We've had more cases recently, but it averages anywhere from five to 10 cases a month. And there are two committees that are seeing that level of caseload every single month.
So Betty, are you saying there's five to 10 total a month?
Yes, and these are, these are all the ones that are on appeal. These are out of the 48% there are.
Well, some of, the applications, I guess maybe that's probably accurate. Just knowing that periodics is separate, that's not included in this number.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I was going to say six to 10. So me and Betty's are close there, so about six to 10 per month.
So you're talking...
Yeah, we're at the same ballpark.
Yeah, 100 to 120 cases a year that go through the appeal process out of this 48%.
All right, so let's just, for simple numbers, say it's 100. I was going to lean and say 84, but that... And Erin, you said, per year, you're, you know, last year you were looking at, write it down correctly, 477 total applicants. Is that correct?
Correct, in fiscal year '22.
All right, so 25% of these people are ending up in a hearing. You know, I, I'm kind of like, to be honest with you, I'm kind of like Jerry. That 35%, that's kind of like the low-hanging fruit they ought to be able to generate out of its all these others. And I had the same concern that they're not going to see an expedited, timely hearing of their issues. Let me ask a question. We're talking about what is being proposed in the legislation. Does the current proposal basically say shall go to one? Or can that be changed to a may? You know, I'd hate to do this, and as Jerry pointed out, turn around and have to go back two, three years later in order to get it changed.
It says shall. Yeah, it's shall.
If we change the shall to a may, then would that not give us the ability to manage our own house?
I'm going to have to get legal to.
Would it also give us the ability to go to zero? Right, exactly.
I think Mr. Pendergrass, Ms. Pendergrass has hit on the problem there. Is the may implies that the member doesn't have to go through a disability application review at all?
Well, I mean, that can be, again, that's just a question of language. You know, you could change it to simply say, you know, a minimum of one to a maximum of three.
I think what we, the danger we run into when we don't have definitive rules for ourselves to follow is how do we determine which cases go to one versus which cases go to three at what we're in the process?
If you're sitting here recommending to us that we go to one, and we do that for the next year or two years or whatever, and we determine it ain't working the way we thought it would, and we want to administratively say, we're going to change that to two or to three, it can be done without having to go back to the legislature, which we all know they really get tired of us going back to them for every little something.
Lyle, I think the reality this year is that the bill sponsor and LRC have agreed that this is the way it is. I mean, the train's off the station.
You're not, we're not talking about taking it out. I'm recommending or suggesting that you change the wording slightly.
I think we're going to get pushback on any modifications to what they've already agreed to.
Well, then, you know, we're wasting our time sitting here this afternoon then.
And my concern always was that we're changing a policy, but trustees had no voice. I like the language in 1998, that if it's denied on the first one, that it automatically goes to the other two. I mean, from the, from the DAC perspective, it's helpful to have all three of those. And a lot of times, there are two denials and one approval. I've seen... I've seen some, two approvals, but not very often. Jerry, what do you, what's your perspective on what's see in at DAC?
I agree with you. I like, you know, I think the idea of saving some money by having one reviewer do the initial, and if it's denied, go to two like it does in that, like it was done in '98. And I think that would be the best process for the members, the board, and with the, and when it comes to the committee hearing, that gives you a whole nother opinion that you can look at from the doctor. Because the more information they have, it's, it's the better you're able to make the decisions. You know, because see, this, this is people's food on their table and roofs over their head. This is something shouldn't be taken lightly. And so, I agree with Betty that this is a, something that needs to be, that we need to save money, but we also need to protect our members in the same process. And, and I think that would do it and give the committee members additional information when it comes before them by having the three doctors. If, when it gets to that point, I'm sure that's what it would be.
Lyle, just a little bit more background. They, this year, they accelerated the timeframe when they wanted to get bills by about three months, in terms of targets. And I think we're, we're learning that we can do things better in terms of collaboration. So, for example, we met with legal cities, KECO, and school boards to talk about the provisions we were requesting in the housekeeping bill. We had that meeting before we met with the bill sponsor and got a lot of questions out of the way. We can keep doing a better job of doing that, including a meeting with your legislative committee. And we're happy to do that, and have these kind of discussions before it gets to the bill stage. That'd be very productive.
And I would just say, in last year, you know, this was presented to at both the PPOB and the House State Government Committee. And there was support for the change to the process. There was, I apologize, I can't remember which legislator it was, but there was an ask about the expediting. When it goes through one to Dr. Two to Dr. Three, could there be something put in the contract that would help with more defined that timeframe for getting that review if we changed it in this process? So, I will say that the EMRO contract is up for renewal at the end of this fiscal year. So, I think there, I mean, we would have to go through negotiations and contract amendment, but I think we could try to work with EMRO to maybe get some language put in there that would have. I think right now, it's mostly states timely. Maybe we can put some more definitive timelines, like dates, or days, weeks around the process to help ensure. Again, like I said, that we would have to speak with EMRO. I don't know for sure that that could be done, but it was, it's certainly something that we could negotiate.
Yeah, we haven't.
Have we, question with regard to, if you're telling, if you're telling us that you're anticipating upwards of 45% less medical reviews, what does that translate into in reduction in the contract?
Right, yeah, those, those conversations would need to occur as well.
It, it won't be 45%. It's because the medical examiner is just part of that contract.
Oh, right, yes, good point.
Go back to the table. Of the people who get reviewed, how many of them get the outcome they want? And how many of them don't?
Ultimately, you mean, what, what the?
Yeah, after they go through this process, they appeal, or they go through the boards. What percentage of them get the outcome that they want?
That is something, that's a number we have struggled to quantify over the years because the application process crosses fiscal years, it crosses calendar years. It's not, we, some people are denied and never appeal. Some people are approved but don't accept the benefit, don't start retirement. So, when it goes to the hearing and the outcome of the hearing, when we've tried to think of how to report from of this group of people who've applied for disability retirement, how many of them, you know, percentage-wise can expect to be ultimately approved, ultimately denied, or ultimately an administrative closure, other than choosing to do a snapshot of a particular group of people? It's, there's not a way to achieve any.
Okay, the guess. You've been doing this for a while, and I don't know anything.
Yeah, I've been doing this long enough not to guess.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you from the DAC perspective that the cases that end up on appeal process, very few of those are overturned.
Overturned by?
By the.
Franklin Circuit.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, what I was going to say is, Dr. Miltman, is the barometer I use to the success of maybe not, it's not what the, our, our membership wants. It's those cases that the members disagree with the final decision by the KPBA boards.
I understand.
Or the disability committee. And they go to the Franklin Circuit Court. What I use is that barometer of how many, what percentage of cases are upheld by Franklin Circuit Courts. And those that are returned, saying, you erred. And I can't speak for the second committee. I just know I follow the one I'm on better. And I would say it's better than 90% Franklin Circuit agrees with our decision.
I've seen the same thing with the other committee.
Yeah, if that helps explain it to you any better.
I understand. And when we add this vocational expert, it'll probably be even, you know, the committee will even be more right.
My thought is that the 35% goes up not that much. It, it might go to 40% in, in the final decision.
What we're talking about, very few people. And is it worth trying, going to somebody in the legislature to change the language? I'm starting to think not.
Well, but to get to that process, we have to give them the due process, which is the other two medical reviewers is part of that discussion.
Right. But we got, I think we can get what the legislative people, what the legislature wants in this bill done without too much cost. And it's probably more important issues for us from the legislature than this. What do you think, Betty?
I'm not exactly sure what you're suggesting.
Just leave the language as it is.
And it extends the process for members? And we don't get the cost savings that we anticipated?
I'm saying that difference in trying to change the language by a couple of words is not worth it.
Are you talking about the shall to may change?
Well, I think we've decided that that's not an option. If we go back to page 215 and look at the '98 language, to me, the '98 language is a compromise. We automatically go to two additional reviewers if the first reviewer denies, where the proposed language is stepping through one medical reviewer at a time. And even if we can expedite it, let's say it takes six to eight weeks instead of the three weeks, we're still extending the time where if we go to two additional examiners at the beginning, then I think we cut that six-weeks process down to three.
Lyle, you may be doing this, but can you monitor case by case by case? Does it take one, does it take two, does it take three? And how long does it take? Get a profile of that?
We can, for a particular case, for sure. And, and even a group of closed cases. But as far as, they may have all applied at a different time and reached that, where they got to the medical examiner. But yes, we can.
It's a lot of questions about how many of this, or how many of that. It'd be nice to have the metrics.
That's not something that is currently tracked. Is it a two, or is it unanimous? But we certainly have, the data exists to be able to.
And right forward.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just like, I'm sorry, Betty, go ahead.
Well, and I understand the notion that the General Assembly thinks the language is XYZ, and that what David is saying is that the CERS Board of Trustees does not really have an opportunity to make a recommendation for a different language. I get that notion.
Next year.
But then we're doing another housekeeping bill on the same paragraph. That doesn't play any better. That doesn't play any better with legislators than asking for this change now. And we raised these concerns last year. So, before we got to this point, there was an opportunity to come back to the trustees and say, this is why we're going this way, and have the discussion that we're having today. We had that opportunity to do that. This is a staff proposal, not a legislative proposal.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was, it was a discussion.
Yeah, well, yeah. It was, it was a concern by the CERS Legislative Working Group when we had a meeting with legislators and stakeholders in Frankfurt to hammer out the final details on the bill. I raised the same questions that the Legislative Working Group had raised. And so.
Part of my point is, we were not involved in those discussions.
Yeah, you were. Erin was sitting right across the table from me.
We were not involved in the Legislative Working Group discussion.
Well, that's, that's, that I will agree.
We were in the, in the final meeting at LRC last year. We did discuss it, we talked about it, and everyone came to the agreement that it would move through as it is in the, as it's listed in the housekeeping bill what was, what was put through last year.
And what I said then was that we can try it, and if it doesn't work, then we'll be coming back and asking for it.
You did change.
And that bill didn't pass, which opened up a door for some communications on the, the issues and the concerns. So, I mean, I get the complexity of the communications with the legislative body. But they're not, PPOB's not having a meeting in July. One reason that I pushed this meeting up to the beginning of July was that I thought we would need to send something through to PPOB before the last of July. That's not necessary.
You're absolutely right. They don't like housekeeping bills.
They don't.
Do they have any idea what KTRS is doing?
Teachers.
Other teachers.
Teachers.
Yeah. They have, their process is, it's different than ours. They, it's defined in their statutes, and I'm not.
We haven't really looked at it to compare it, no.
We haven't.
Well, anybody else? Oh, Jerry, go ahead.
Well, I'm not quite sure if this is appropriate time to bring this up. But I've recently had a case that occurred during COVID. The member, it was a site that was not filed in a timely manner because they couldn't get, they were on injury leave from work. And because of COVID, all the doctors, all the treatment that they could receive was unavailable. And as a result, they could not get their disability because of the medical emergency that occurred of COVID at the time, where they couldn't even get into hospitals to receive treatment. I'd like to see maybe some sort of carve-out, if not this session, the next session, that when the Commonwealth has some sort of state of emergency, that the time of the state of emergency would be added to the, the window where they're allowed to file. I, I, you know, when we had this discussion in our group, it was, you know, this is what the law says, and there is no carve-out, or no, you know, you can't do this because of the circumstances at the time. So, if we legally can't do it that way, then we need to put some sort of caveat to where if, you know, it's, it's a once-in-a-lifetime event, like COVID, where the hospitals and your treatment facilities are closed down, but it's not fair to our members to be penalized because of state of emergencies and their order to shut down. So, I'd like to see maybe some sort of carve-out to where that would be allowed.
Would that be a broader issue?
I'd like to go into more detail, but I don't want to violate any HIPAA or statutory regulations of the committee.
Well, the issue of a state of emergency can include things like tornadoes, floods, you know, those kinds of things that can also limit access to the healthcare system. I mean, look at.
They can lose their records, and have to get duplicates.
There's a lot of records in Mayfield that are gone forever. Those kinds of things. And I agree with Jerry that that is, now, that may be a unique case. It may be the only one we ever have. But that particular member would have qualified for disability if they had not been in a situation where the only medical treatment that could define whether it's disabling or not was not available to them because of the emergency, not because of anything else that that member could control.
Nothing that they have, exactly, that they could control. They, it wasn't that they weren't trying to, it just wasn't available to them.
So, I don't know whether legal would want more time to review that, to try to come up with language that would address it in a broad frame that would allow, that one came through the appeals process because of the timing issue. So, is there a way that we can give the DAC and ACT committees the ability to waive a timeline under certain circumstances?
And I hate to call Dr. Carver out because she, she was in agreement with what we leaned toward, but she acquiesced to what our legal advisor said wasn't legal in that situation. And so, you know, and I was feeling the same way also. So, I think this is something where that would be good for the members. It would be good for the conscience of those members trying, or the trustees serving on these committees of trying to do the right thing, protect our members, and act as a fiduciary of the fund also. Because their only option now is to file suit. It's going to cost them more money, more time. And that's not fair. And of course, then we've got to pay for it. Because they're going to have to file suit, we're going to have to go to court. I mean, it just costs more by not having it.
And that was definitely a situation where the committee got stuck in a corner that they couldn't manage. The member couldn't control the availability of medical treatment. The committee couldn't, didn't have an option to go a different route, a different route. So, it's a problem from more than one perspective. So, I think that's a good suggestion to definitely put on the table. If we have limited ability to add to this bill, then we should definitely take a look at it for the next.
You could go as a separate bill. It don't have to be on the housekeeping.
We've got at least one other item we're trying to get. So, I don't know, there's, it's not aligned with this, but maybe.
So, do any of the other trustees have any objection to asking legal to take a look at that issue and come up with some suggestions? I don't see any objections there. On the medical review process, I think we have three options. We can take no position whatsoever. We can ask for a change in the proposal, or we can oppose the proposal as it's written. So, I would.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
In all the discussion, I've known the mechanism is option. In all the discussion, I've gone back and looked at these options, and we have a fiduciary responsibility, as I said, to the members and to the system. It seems like the system is treating fairly, and our members are treating fairly with the 1998 language. Why was that changed in the first place?
Sure, it was cost savings.
It's the question is, why did it change?
Yeah.
Yeah, why did it change from 98 to 2001? Yeah. And it was.
I think the cost savings are minimal, and they, by changing it like that, we created a system that would be very unfair to our members.
Again, like we were discussing, based on, and, you know, a lot of the information comes from Liz's recollection, because she's been in disability longest, but that was done from 98 to 2001 was a cost savings to the system, because they only needed two denials to deny the application, but you had to pay for three reviews as it was set up under 1998. So again, like I said, the changes over the years were done as a result of what the staff was seeing administratively and recommending changes to, to make the process better for cost savings to the system and for members in cases where we were seeing extended periods of time.
It's a valid question.
Any other questions, comments?
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that the CERS Board recommends the methodology that was adopted in 1998, has one medical examiner reviewing the materials. If it's approved, that's the end of it. If it's denied, then it would go to the two additional, as opposed to one, one, and one.
I'll accept a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I just want to, I think it's a fair point to say that this statute is in Chapter 61. It is a shared statute between CERS and KRS. So legal can maybe help me, but if there's a motion made just from the CERS side, do we have to get agreement from KRS, too?
Well, it's a shared statute.
That's why I worded it the way I did, as that the CERS Board supports, not adopts, but supports the 98 version.
And we're expressing an opinion.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
I think.
I think that's totally fine.
And that's what Representative Johnson asked for, was an opinion from the CERS Board.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't think we can, we can apply this shared statute separately. That would be almost impossible. So it's just a, again, it's voicing an opinion of how the CERS Board feels.
Okay, thank you.
Little more than a resolution, but.
There's history on that comment, but yes, yes. So any other discussion on the motion? With that, all those in favor of Mr. Powell's motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I think I hear seven yays and one no. So that motion passes. So what I will do is draft a memo to Representative Johnson to let him know about our discussion, and, because he was generous enough to say, "If you guys want to talk about it, do that as soon as you can, and get back to me as soon as you can." So.
Betty, would it make sense to include Senator Igden? He's the other co-chair, and he was in that meeting?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I can do that. So I can send it to, I'll just send a memo to both of them, expressing the concerns and the opinion, the opinion of the CERS Board, and only the CERS Board. So.
Would it make any sense to get the other board to maybe do this at the same time, or not at the same time, because we've already done it?
Well, I'll leave that to Mr. Eager's discretion to raise it with the other chair, to see if they want to have that discussion.
The CEO for the K was in the meeting with Representative Johnson, and he asked, John Hilton Powell, the K Board viewed it, and he said the K Board supports the current housekeeping bill. So I think here, it may, you know, I can raise it, but I don't know that it's going to get anywhere.
They haven't actually discussed it, though, right?
John's comment was, they approved the last year's bill, and they're aware of this year's, as all the minor changes, and he.
Did they vote on it last year?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, just ask them again, and tell them what we're doing, see if that makes them think about it.
Well, my whole point is that when we're dealing with a policy change, that the trustees should be involved in the discussions about policy changes.
Yes, but maybe what we need to do is start thinking about this earlier.
Yes.
In the future, I know.
We agree.
The year of.
Definitely.
And I think when, when staff has an issue that they think merits a policy change, the first discussion should occur with trustees, and then we get to drafting legislation.
And I would just say, from the change in our process, our housekeeping bill process last year mimicked basically what we had used in years past prior to the separation, except we included the CEOs at the time, at the beginning. This year, we have changed the process to include the chairs of all the boards, along with the CEOs. Like Mr. Eager said, we've even met with some of the outside stakeholders, KLC, CAECO, Kentucky School Board Association before.
And that's good.
Yeah, and so we're, we are making process changes, and we're open to more changes in the future. We just want to make sure everyone has all the information they need and to be able to move forward.
There are those on staff who would view this as an administrative decision, not a policy. So therefore, I think that kind of discussion should take place earlier also.
If it costs either the C Board or the K Board money, it needs to go to the Board of Trustees, or each of those groups.
That's interesting, Mr. Cheshire, and I.
Cheating.
Cheating, excuse me.
Don't make a wrong board.
Okay, it's only been a few months. I'm sorry. The question for me is, and I'm really struggling with lines of demarcation, and whose responsibility is who, that kind of stuff, but some of the things that we've been looking at is if it's a housekeeping bill, and it's specific to administrative tasks, then really should it go to KPPA alone, or should it go to all three boards? And what happens if the two boards disagree? It's a difficult thing the staff is trying to navigate, and, and we are trying to do it right, but there's a lot of gray area right now still. But I appreciate your comment.
That's one reason why I divvied up between the notion of a technical change that has clarifying language that really gets proposed by a legal analysis, and I don't necessarily think trustees need to get tangled up in that, as opposed to a policy change. And the definition of a policy change for me is we're changing the process we use to provide a member service. And that, that's why I looked at this particular one as a policy change, not just an administrative issue.
I think Rebecca's issue's still on the table, though. Is this a KPPA board issue, or?
Yeah, and I just think we just need some discussion, because I appreciate your definition, Betty. I just, if then it's a process change, and it's specific to the administration of benefits, then to me, that absolutely falls just to KPPA. It's an administration of a benefit. Although, Mr. Cheating, with the cost, is an interesting, I don't know, just lots to think about with that.
Yeah, these, these costs come from the trust, and CERS ends up paying 62% of this cost, no matter how many CERS members are.
Everything we do comes from the trust.
Yeah.
And we, we can't get bogged down in arguing that we want to spend that money on administrative issues.
It's also the majority of the famines in the disability are CERS members.
Okay. I guess maybe I missed that part. Okay.
So you shortened that representation.
[laughing].
I seem to recall that phrase from somewhere.
Each has four.
Washington DC still uses that phrase, do they not? I've been on their license plates.
All right. Any other comments on the proposed legislation? This is a special meeting, so we're limited in our discussions.
Let's move on.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr.
Oh, that's just the fish. Don't you have other stuff? That's all on the agenda.
No, I talked to Mr. Branco yesterday, and we don't have any litigation issues that are time-sensitive, so I'm going to leave those for our regular meeting in September.
Betty?
Yes?
Just a point of clarification, since we didn't get into that part of the bill, there was language in the other bills to change the 30-day waiting period to come back to work to 30 days, from 90 to 30 percent.
Yes.
I just, you know, I read through that, and read through enough, it's easy to get confused, but I just want to hear somebody tell me that we have addressed the issue of a retiree from a hazardous position coming back into a position that is non-hazardous.
And they can now do that within 30 days, is that correct?
One thing, it's not 30 days. It's one calendar month, and that is effective for retirement dates starting January 1st, 2024. So anyone who retires on or after January 1st, 2024, for most, all of the, I think all of the, had a three-month waiting period, would now just have a one-month waiting period before they had to come back. Still, no pre-arranged agreement is allowed. That's a federal law, and there are still some exceptions for elected officials. They have a longer waiting period if they go back to the same elected position and things of that nature.
Karen, what was the rationale? You want to explain the rationale for doing that?
Well, it was, there was, it was attached to.
Partial lump sum.
Partial lump sum, thank you, that KLC originally was, on the legislative agenda for last year, was looking at a drop program, and went through the process of looking at cost and things, and decided not to do that. But one of the issues with that was allowing the member to actually retire, draw the benefit, but continue working. So it was in an attempt to get these people back in the workforce sooner than what they're allowed to today.
One example was the school resource officers who were working in a hazardous position prior to retirement, but then moved to a non-hazardous position as a school resource officer with school boards. So I think, Mr. Cheating, the answer is the change got made, but the effective date is probably longer than any of the constituents who wanted that change wanted. It's not going to be effective until next January.
Was it beneficial?
The change was made. And that was a piece of legislation that was in last year's housekeeping bill that got pulled out and addressed separately.
And if I could comment a little bit on that also, part of it also stems to the emergency services who are having difficulty recruiting members at this time, and this would help them get back to better staffing. For example, Kentucky State Police has a Trooper R position, which means they've retired, but they've come back to work for a particular amount of time. There, some of the other local agencies are trying to adopt something similar as that also, to, like I said, to help with their staffing issues, to provide the appropriate services that's needed.
That's, that's exactly what we were hearing in discussions with KLC.
So I think we got it done. It's just not effective yet. Any other questions? All the materials in board books. I have a motion for Mr. Ferguson to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, folks. I appreciate your participation. We are adjourned.